...mountain properties, they also want their properties that are adjacent to the higher mountain water line. At the Bundy Ranch, we had a situation where they used the desert tortoise as their excuse. They said that the desert tortoise is an endangered species and that the cattle are putting them in danger, so therefore the cattle have to leave. My family has been ranching there since 1877. And the turtles and the cattle seem to be okay, but none of that mattered. We hired lawyers, we fought it, we had scientists, we did everything we could to try to prove, and it was proven time and time again in court. And we won time and time again on those, in the local courts, on those issues. The US prosecuting attorney stood on the steps of the courthouse building and says, "Well, for now, for now, that's what the ruling is, for now." Meaning he was just gonna continue to exhaust these efforts, these court efforts, these legal efforts, until he won. That was what was his, what he was saying on the courthouse. And so then, in 1990, right around 19, the turn of 1990, right around there, the BLM came up with a slogan. And the slogan they actually posted on their wall in the Las Vegas, the Southern Nevada District. And it said, "No move by 92 and cattle free by 93." That was their slogan. And, you know, here we were supposed to try to have this culture of, you know, helping each other and so forth, and that's basically what their desire was. They began to either regulate the ranchers, there was 53 ranchers in Clark County. And we all rans close together, we all shared public land, we all grazed and had our grazing rights there. And they began to, one by one, well, you know, basically regulate. And they put regulations such as you had to remove the cattle at certain times of the year, you had to decrease your cattle count on the range. And the range down there is a lot different, like you don't pull your cattle off. You have to keep them on because you can't gather them. Anyway, there's a lot different conditions. But these regulations were clearly in an effort to destroy the rancher's ability to make a living. And we tried to legally defend ourselves, and one by one, these ranchers were put out of business, either through duress or by actual force. And then ultimately, there was about seven or eight ranchers, besides my dad, there was about seven or eight ranchers that they finally went in and actually paid them $75,000 for their ranch, the price of a pickup. And the ranchers were so exhausted and so to the point where they couldn't stand anymore, they actually took $75,000 for their ranch, right? And now, those ranchers' children, every single one of them had to move to the cities. And they don't even know where their meat come from, their grandchildren don't even know where meat comes from. And my dad, the whole time, well, not the whole time, he began, him and a couple of the other ranchers and ranchers, they began to study what was their position, how could they, how could they fight this? And after an exhaustive amount of research and study and so forth, they found something that was even greater than what they ever imagined. And that was found in the Constitution of the United States and the reason why we passed it out. Because they found that the federal government didn't have authority to be administering the lands in the first place. That under Article 1, 8, 17, it says that in order for the federal government to own and control land inside a state, they first have to get consent from the state legislature. They second, they have to purchase it. And third, they can only use it for the erection of forts, magazines, dockyards, arsenals, and other needful buildings. Those are the rules that the federal government must follow in order to own land, own and control land inside a state. So ask yourself, is the land that is being controlled in your county, have they got consent from the state legislatures to control it? Did they purchase it? And are they using it for the erection of forts, magazines, arsenals, dockyards, and other needful buildings? I'm not seeing any heads, are they? Did they purchase it? Did they get consent from the state legislatures? See, and that's what happens during, not to get too far out, but basically, at the moment of statehood, everything changes. No longer does the federal government have the authority to control and administer the land inside the state. It becomes the right of the people of that state to control and to administer those lands. And if the federal government needs some of that land to perform its duties, such as national defense, international trade, or being an appeals court for the states, if they need some of that land to do that, they have to get consent from the state legislature. They have to purchase it, and they can only use it for those reasons. That's it. And that, and what it did, what it does is it protects the people from what we're experiencing now. This issue with the Hammond's, this issue that you, that we're experiencing in Harney County, it is a jurisdictional issue. The federal government has come down into our states and they are controlling the land and resources unlawfully. And that is, that is the argument. That is the argument, there is no other argument. If we were abiding by the Constitution, the Hammond's would never have been, would never be in the position they're in. If we're abiding by the Constitution, these ranchers would be able to ranch without being in fear. If we're abiding by the Constitution, if one of us stepped out of line and broke a law, we would be prosecuted in a county court. And we would probably find justice there, actually. We would be tried among our peers here in the county, right? So this is a jurisdictional issue. And if you try to argue anything, even though, even though the abuses are tremendous and they're grotesque, they're egregious, they are. And we can't forget that they happen, don't get me wrong. But the Hammond's should have never been in a federal court in the first place. And that, and again, that is the foundational reason, or principle here. That is the foundational argument. And so, and it is the solution as well. The only solution that we have here, in my opinion, and in the many, many years that I've been involved in this, I've watched my dad and ranchers for my whole life, I'm 40 years old. My whole life, I watched my grandfather go through it, I watched my dad go through it, and it's all the same exact thing. I could give you statistics like, there's over 100,000 cases where the federal government has used their courts to take land in the western United States. 100,000 cases. Guess how many of those the federal government lost? Zero. There is no justice found in the federal court system. If we think we can go run and prosecute the US prosecutor in the federal court, then when, we're fooling ourselves. So, I would like to, a lot of people have asked, well, why are you, if the federal government is doing this to us, us people here, then why are you being so hard on the county and the state? Why are you, why is this notice of grievance to the county and the state officials? You know, why are you basically insisting, and it's not just me, don't get me wrong, why are you insisting that the state and the county hold an evidential hearing and come up with these findings? Why? What's that?
It's their jurisdiction.
It is their jurisdiction. It's their duty. Because we do not have a system of, we were never, there is no way for redress or protection of the federal government coming down against the people. There is no protection. Except what? When the states and the counties stand and say, "No, not in our county." That is the protection, it's called federalism. Our founding fathers were federalists. You might think, "Well, man, I don't like the word 'federal' in this word," right? Because I know I don't. But they were federalists, yes.
How do you handle the argument of the supremacy clause? Being the federal government is over everything?
There's a, well, one is, how much do I say it? A horse shit, okay? Okay? I hope I'm okay with quoting about that. But it's, for every, for every, you know, when we look at this and we go, okay, let's, if we want to go to case law, you know, we can go back and we could give 100 cases where it proves that the state has authority to, and it's sovereign, right? And we can go in the early, you know, in the last 75 years, we can go to another 50 cases where the Supreme Court was ruled against the state, okay? We can ask ourselves which was wrong, was wrong here. Right? It's right here, it's very clear. The growth pattern of this country was that you had the states, they were sovereign, independent states, and they united together. The growth pattern is, you have territories that were not states, that territory is under the jurisdiction of the federal government. And as Article 4 says, that they make all meaningful rules and regulations, okay? As soon as that territory gets populated enough to become a state, and as soon as they're enacted into the union as a state, no longer at that moment does the federal government have the right to exercise territorial law. No longer does it. Now that state is fully protected under the United States Constitution, and the people become sovereign and have their rights within the state. That's the growth pattern. And if, and if we didn't have these, if we didn't have these, I guess wicked men, if you want to say, call it what you want, but if we didn't have these wicked men, it's a beautiful pattern, because what can happen is, our territories, we can obtain land, whether it's through a war or whether we purchased it, we can obtain land that could be a territory, the people can go in and begin to populate that territory and it could become a state. We could do that across the whole continent, across the whole world, right? And make people free across the whole world. That was the intent, right? But we have a situation where our federal government has turned their sights on the land and resources of the people, because that's where the wealth is generated. And the states have not done their duty to check and balance, and neither have the counties. So that's why this problem is really a county's problem and a state's problem. Because the federal government's just doing what the founding fathers knew they were gonna do. Yes?
Has anyone looked into the county or state being threatened by the feds, and that's why they won't step in?
Well, there's, okay, that's a good question. Yes, they have, and remember, this is, this is a, this is a problem across, you know, the whole country right now. And the main reasons why counties won't stand, counties won't stand, there's four reasons. One is, there's either corruption, or there's, there's, the county officials are uneducated, they're ignorant, right? Or there's, it's because of funding and fear. Those are the reasons why a county won't stand up. Because yes, they are threatened, there are times when they're threatened. They are funded, and they're afraid to lose that funding, and they're put in undue obedience. Thomas Jefferson said, if the founding, or if the states ever allowed the federal government to come in and control their land and resources, this is Thomas Jefferson, said, "If the states ever allowed the federal government to come in and control their land and resources, what it'll do is it'll destroy the economy of the state, expose the people to the tyranny of the federal government, and put the state into undue obedience." Because what'll happen is, they, the state will not be able to generate enough revenue, and it'll have to beg for funding from the federal government, right? And why is that? Because they control the land and the resources. All the wealth, all wealth is generated from the earth. Everything we see here, everything in front of us, came from the earth, right? And if you control the land and the resources, then you can control the people. You can control everything. And they understand this, and there's a lot of pieces to it. But I hope I answered your question. But it doesn't matter, it is the duty of the county. It is the duty of the state to stand and defend the people. And when they will not do it, then whose ultimate duty is it? Is the people's. Is ultimately our responsibility, we have delegated it to them. And if they will not do it, then we must. So, any other questions or thoughts, or anything that anybody else wants to add before I go on?
I had two questions. First of all, you, a few minutes ago, you referred to Article 1, Section 8. Okay, I haven't found the specific in there, I know it's supposed to be there. The other is, what do you think of the federal government, say the BLM, owning very small portions of land, such as around Steen's Mountain, or Yaquena Head, or, you know, parks? Do you think that they should even own that, or?
It's not my opinion.
Oh.
The Constitution says, "Erection of forts, magazines, arsenals, dockyards, and other needful buildings." It's not my idea. It's the founding fathers' idea, that the federal government should not own land inside a state unless it's for those reasons, unless they have, unless they're using, or they have gotten consent from the state legislature and they have purchased it. So, and the thing is, is this is one thing that we have to understand. That is the law, right? So how many times have we been told we're breaking the law? We're not breaking the law. They're breaking the law. This is the supreme law of the land. And so, anyway, if you want to look at that, it's in Clause 17. I can read it right here, I don't mind doing that. Read it several times, Article 1, Section 8, Clause 17. And it doesn't number it in this book, you have to kind of go down. It says, so first of all, talks about their jurisdiction over Washington DC, and then it says, "To exercise like authority," meaning like Washington DC, "over places purchased by consent of the legislature of the state, in which the same shall be for the erection of forts, magazines, arsenals, dockyards, and other needful buildings." Now, to put things in perspective, when you step across, according to their view and according to the territorial law that they are enforcing on federally controlled land, if you step across from private to federally controlled land, then you no longer are protected by the US Constitution, according to them. You now fall under what is Article 4 jurisdictional law. Let me read you what that is, it's very simple. And this will start to explain a few things to you. It's in Article 4, Section 3, and it says, this is territorial law. So when you step over the line, you are no longer protected under the Constitution. This is the rule that you are protected, that they say is their right. "Congress shall have power to dispose of and make all needful rules and regulations respecting the territory." Okay? Am I making sense, what I'm saying here? You do not have any rights on federally controlled land in a territory. You do not have any rights, unless Congress deems that you have a right. Because we give them power to administer, fully administer territories, okay? But the thing that I'm trying to educate and trying to, you know, help understand is that we do not live in a territory. We live in the state of, or you live, most of you, in the state of Oregon. I live in the state of Idaho, right? And because we live in the state of Idaho, in our state of Oregon, we're protected, we have the right to protection under the full Constitution of the United States. Meaning that we have due process, that we have the right to due process. We have the right to speak when we want to. We have the right to carry our guns and to protect ourselves. We have the right, and I could go on. But according to them, and you have to understand this, when you're on federal-controlled land, they deem it as US territory, and that they make all needful rules and regulations they can give and they can take. And that's why we see these things happening. That's why all these regulations and all these rules, and they don't have to get, they don't have to get legislation. That's why they can do all that they can do, that's what they believe. And it's our duty here as a people to understand that and to say, "No, this is a state, and no longer will allow you to, no longer will we allow you to control the land and resources within the state." And then it takes care of all of those water issues, EPA issues, all of those things. It takes care of all of that. And it puts the power back into the people's, into the people's hands. And it creates freedom. And we saw that at the Bundy Ranch. We have that example, that it can be done, okay? Any other questions or thoughts right now? I know I'm kind of rambling a little bit.
I don't know if people here know, but the state of Utah has, they're in the process of demanding their land back, as you're talking. And I think it was just yesterday that the state school board, or the school authorities, said that they were for that, because the federal government loses money when they are in control of the lands. If the state was in control of it, they would be earning $14 and something per acre, I guess. I can't remember the exact figures, but look that up, Valley, you probably know this.
Yeah, I, I, so. Yeah, to get into it a little bit more, there is some conflict there. But yes, but that is happening in Utah, yes.
I'm new to the issue, so I'm learning a little bit more about it. Probably it's a dumb question, but did the Hammond's violate Section 4 by crossing over into federal land?
Well, the thing is, well, the thing is, is, one, the land is not Article 4 land, okay? That's my argument. The land is what's called Article 1 land, meaning 1817, I mean, it's a state law, okay? But they did prosecute them as if it was Article 4 land. And yes, that's the thing is, yes, they violated it, you know, all of us, every day violated. I mean, there's not a person in here that probably doesn't violate one of those laws every day.
The Hammond's property is surrounded by BLM property.
Which are public lands, is that, is that an Article 4 thing now, or no?
I'm glad you're asking the question. Does anybody want to answer that here? So you're saying, is, is the land that is adjacent to the Hammond's ranch, is it Article 4 land, or is it not? Who, anybody want, I mean, that's what we're talking about, right?
You know, if they haven't followed the steps that you made out there, if they haven't, if they didn't have the legislation approved or any of those things, if they didn't purchase it, then no.
Yes, it's inside the border of the state, right? Yes.
At what point did they actually cross that federal line?
Who?
The Hammond's. They never did.
Yeah, that's the point he's making.
We're trying to say, is there is no federal line, are we, are we in the state of law?
Could I make a statement, maybe they crossed that, that's a federal court.
No, that's a good point. What happened there is, they legitimized this unlawful act by entering into the court, by trying to argue this issue in the court. And that's what, unfortunately, the American Land Council is doing the same thing, so I disagree with their position, because it's not constitutional. Although I, you know, I, I mean, I'm glad they're bringing the issue up. But we cannot allow ourselves to get sucked up into a federal court and expect to win. If it will not happen, we have to stand, just like my dad eventually did. Because what happened, in 1993, my dad said, once he understood this, once he understood, he tried to get the other ranchers to follow. I mean, believe me, I remember my dad nearly begging the ranchers to make this stand. But they wouldn't, they wouldn't make it, because they were afraid of their words. You know, I can almost remember him as a young, young boy. If we stand against the most powerful government ever known to man, we will lose our ranches, we'll lose our heritage, we might even lose our lives. If we do this, we will lose. And my dad said, "Well, you have to, because it's the only way in which we have a stand." Okay? But they wouldn't. And so, one by one, we watched them all, all be, lose. Every single one of them, until my dad was the last one. And you have to understand, the stand that my dad said was, "No longer am I going to pay the federal government to use my own rights." Okay? And no longer am I going to sign the federal government's contracts to use my own rights. Okay? And he made that, and he stopped signing the grazing contracts in 1993. Now, and he would not enter their courts. He would not enter their courts, they didn't know what to do with them. They'd never had anybody not try to find, and waste a million dollars. They didn't know what to do with them. So they ho-hummed around for a long, long time, this is in 93. And in 2006, the federal agents got all of the local law enforcement together, and they said, "What we're gonna try to do is, we're gonna try to designate Cliven Bundy as a domestic terrorist, and then we're gonna try to charge him under domestic terrorist charges." Okay? That's what they said. But the thing is, is the good Lord was looking out for my dad that day, and my cousin, my first cousin, my dad's nephew, was in the room. He was, he was a county deputy. He was in the room, and they began to, the federal government began to say all these horrible things to demonize my dad and why he's a domestic terrorist. And my cousin let them just do it, and they went on for about an hour. They had a film, they had a PowerPoint presentation about how bad and wicked my father is, right? And then about to the end, when they basically announced that they were going to declare Cliven Bundy as a domestic terrorist and charge him as a terrorist, and then just basically throw him in prison and throw away the key. My cousin stood up and testified very clearly to everybody, which was about 100 people in the room, that his uncle, Cliven, was not a domestic terrorist. That he was a good man, that loved his family, and all he wanted to do is to make a living in court the same way that his father, grandfather, and great-grandfather did. Right? And it ended it. It soured the whole meeting, that they abandoned that idea at that time, okay? And then they didn't know what to do. And then in 2012, they began to assemble and they actually looked like they were going to do what they were gonna do, what they did in 2014. But something happened, they actually, they actually came in to Bunkerville, they occupied a multi-level hotel in Mesquite, and then, then they left. They left. I mean, they just left, we don't know what happened. And then in 2014, they came in, full force, 200 fully armed men, threatened my family that they would kill us. They actually used the words, that if we resisted in any way, that this would be another Waco or Ruby Ridge. Okay? My point is, I guess I'm kind of getting a little off point, because I wanted to bring back to the ranchers. Every one of the ranchers in Clark County lost their ranches. And their children, they, most of them had, themselves had to move to the city. Because they, they had to make a living. Their children and their grandchildren are now living in these cities and don't even know what it's like to be on the land. And my dad begged them to stand. Every single one of them that would not stand on the constitutional principles in which I'm, which I'm speaking about today, every single one of them lost their ranch. And there was only one rancher standing, one rancher left, that was my dad. And that was because he stood on these principles. They are right, they are pure, and they are the way to make sure that we defend our life, liberty, and property. It is the right way. And so what I'm suggesting here is that we stand on the Constitution. We stand on jurisdiction, that they do not have authority to be administering the lands inside the state. Therefore, they need to leave the state and leave it to the people to do. And there's a lot to that, but really, it's really quite simple. And it's, and that's why we, we are, we say, and we have said for many, many months now, that the... that the Bundy Ranch is the freest place on earth. We truly, truly believe that. We are free to ranch. We are free to move about. We are a free people on that ranch. And that's because we stood on the correct principles and the peoples ca- came around us. They defended us and we went to ranching. And that's what we're doing. And I'm, I'm pleading with us, with you today to do the same thing. Did, there's one more thing that I want to bring up, but did you have a comment?
So I have a question now. Um it sounds like um you're committed and it shows because the federal government has not infiltrated your ranch or tried to anymore, correct? So if that, if that's true and we are behind the eight ball, as Tim has said, what's, what's the solution for the Hammond's? Because they're, they're in deep trouble.
They are.
So, so what is, what is the solution as you see it?
Well, so, I mean, I'll, I'll just be really, like I said, I told you I'd come clean with you. So this is me coming clean, I'll do the best I can.